This school board, the LaFouche Parish School Board meeting in order. We're gonna go ahead and start with an invitation from the Duffy and Charqueté District. Now follow other preferences.
Loving and merciful God, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight as we commence the 2023-2024 school year. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you send the Holy Spirit upon all leaders of our school district. Let us lead with integrity and let us always put the needs of others ahead of our own. As we start this new school year, we further ask that you keep our students safe and bless our remarkable employees for their unwavering dedication to LaFouche. Finally, never let us forget to put you at the center of everything we do. We ask all of this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D, roll call.
Mr. Wright, Dr. Gia.
Here.
Ms. Babin.
Here.
Ms. Portita.
Here.
Mr. Blant.
Here.
Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Ms. Ballbro.
Ms. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Sharptier.
Here.
Ms. Paul.
Item E, introduce new administrators. Mr. Marshall.
Okay, absolutely. We have introduced you tonight to Ms. Michelle Shelley Chassault, who is coming to us from a previous administrator role at Lockport Lower. And she is now gonna be working with the same kids, just about six or seven years older, at Lockport Middle. She's got with her some support people here tonight, but we're introducing Michelle Chassault. Ms. Chassault, stand up.
Thank you everybody for giving me this opportunity. My career started in the same exact building that my office is in many, many years ago, so I'm happy to be back there, serving the same families that have been in Lockport for a long, long time. And of course, you know, right now I have the littles, now I'll have the bigs. So it's the same family, so I'm happy to be able to work with the same community and give Lockport what it deserves, which is the best for our kids. Thank you.
And we wish you a very happy school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, approval of board consent agenda. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held July 5th, 2023. C, minutes of board in-service held July 26th, 2023. Motion? Motion by Dr. Gia, second by Ms. Sharptier. Any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes. Item three, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting held July 19th, 2023. Ms. Portita?
Hey, to approve the flood insurance renewal quote recommended by Conville Road with Norris Insurance. And so, Ms. Bro, have any? Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion by Ms. Portita, second by Ms. Du Planis.
Okay.
Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
B.
Okay, B. To approve the proposed renewal for the Human Medicare Advantage for the 2024 plan year. So move.
Motion by Ms. Portita, second by Ms. Boujwa. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item C, to approve the contract changes for curricular coordinators and specialists with the 2023-2024 school year. So move.
Motion by Ms. Portita, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes. Item four, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held July 19th, 2023. Ms. Du Planis.
Two, recommended action to approve a request from St. Mary Nativity to waive the fees for the use of facilities at Central LaFouche High School for the track and field.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis. Second by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and your address.
Sure. My name is Linda Henry. I am principal of St. Mary's Nativity School. I am just here to express our appreciation for the use of facilities. We were granted that last year. Since we have no facilities of our own, we very much appreciate the use. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that for the kids. All right. Any other public comment? Any board discussion? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Ballbro?
I'm sorry, I'm always in care for the meeting, so everything's in order. I hope you're good.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And she just asked me if everything was in order. Would you? It was. We'll vote. Motion passes.
Item B, to approve a request from St. Mary's Nativity to waive the fees for the use of facility at Raceland Middle School Gym for volleyball and basketball.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis. Second by Ms. Boujwa. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
I just wanna say, I think this, however, y'all decide to vote is a good thing. My son volunteered coaching for track last, this past spring, and he actually got to work with some of the kids from St. Mary's that were there. And, you know, if you're not familiar with how track works, our middle schools, usually Raceland and Lockport, will attend Central to get experience on actual track. And St. Mary's was there as well, so they, it was a really nice thing. So I think it's a good thing. You guys have excellent students.
Thank you. Any further board discussion? If not, let's vote. Motion passes. Thank you, ladies.
Item C, to approve the high bid in the amount of $501 annual from Austin Adams for hunting and fishing privileges on Section 16, Township 19, South Range 22 East, Bayou Raphael area at Campsite BR4. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Yeah. So we'll do a hands vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. So that would be eight in favor and zero mayes. So motion passes.
Item D, to approve the high bid in the amount of 50% of high income for Blant Nazio for alligator hunting privileges on the LaFouche Parish School Board, Section 16 properties. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Sharptier. Any public discussion? Any board discussion? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ballbro?
So I wasn't here. Is that like typical, like negotiations of us having time?
I just don't know. I've never, we've never come across that before.
Yeah, I think it is.
The highest that they sell.
I think the average, maybe above average, was $7 a foot last year. Don't expect a ton of money.
I just, I've never.
I'm just letting you know.
Never seen it, so.
I just mock one alligator hunting and on average, when you say $7 a foot, that's just, that's just how it is. So 50% of that, I think is awesome.
No, that's why I was asking, like, I didn't know, because I've, it's, I've never seen it.
Any other discussion or questions? If not, we'll vote.
Item E, to approve.
Motion passes.
Item E, to approve domain architect to begin systematic design on hurricane item repairs at Golden Meadow Middle School with a construction budget of $4 million. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Sharptier. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item F, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs in the sum of $115,320 for millwork and the FACS lab and additional locations at South LaFouche High School. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. As we can see, our land and facilities department has been very busy. Motion passes.
Item G, to approve a change order request for owner upgrade to add $4,496 to the contract to add five pipe battlements at LUES single point entry. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item H, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs in the sum of $3,890.70 to replace and/or repair interior doors and frames due to water damage at LaRose Cut Off Middle School. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Boujwa. Any public comment? Board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item I, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs in the sum of $3,850 to remove a 48-inch wide tree truck that fell during Hurricane Ida on the fence line at St. Charles Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion? We'll vote. Motion passes.
Item J, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs in the sum of $6,476.25 to coat and seal the roof on Building 13 at Cut Off Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item K, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs for the demolition of a temporary building at TIP Central for the sum of $7,136. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item L, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs to replace water damaged plywood and install 12-inch by 12-inch ceiling tiles at PLC in the sum of $6,757.21.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item M, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs to paint and add an additional layer of gypsum board at TIP Central in the sum of $19,750.17. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Sharptier. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item N, to approve a change order request for the replacement of two new 5-ton HVAC systems and to add 30 additional days to the TIP Central in the sum of $37,389. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussions? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item O, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs to reinstall power strips and data connections to existing millwork in 8 classrooms in Building Number 7 at Bayou Blue Elementary School in the sum of $2,534.64. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passes.
Item P, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs to replace 175 linear feet of fencing where the portable building was removed at WS LaFour Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item Q, to approve the most responsible, responsive and responsible bidder, Hubbs Property LLC with a base bid in the amount of $803,000. Alternate number one in the amount of $5,000 and ultimate number two in the amount of $18,000 for a total bid amount of $803,000. Eight oh three and twenty-three. Eight oh three, twenty-three for hurricane item repairs at Golden Meadow Middle School. So move.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to say that I know myself and the Golden Meadow community will be thrilled to see roofing action and activity happening at that campus. So I'm grateful to see this progress.
Any further comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes.
Item R, to approve a change order request for single point entry by adding millwork to the front entrance, a speaker for the pass-through window with bullet-resistant steel receiver for the sum of $20,393. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to note that it doesn't say here that this is for Lockport Upper Elementary.
Okay, thank you very much. So for Lockport Upper Elementary. Anyone else? Let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes.
Item S, to approve.
Yes, sir.
To approve, uh, to little bid, how about, to approve the little bid from Cotton Commercial USA with a base bid in the sum of $3,137,754. Alternate number one in the sum of $35,815. Alternate number two in the sum of $23,833. An ultimate number three in the sum of $12,797 for a total bid amount of $3,210,199 for hurricane item repairs at Central LaFouche High School and CM Washington Elementary School. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Boujwa. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item T, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs in the sum of $5,600 for removal, replacement and painting of exterior fiber cement panels on Building 5 at BBLDS that were damaged by window shutters blowing open during Hurricane Ida. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Ms. Portita. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes.
Item U, to approve a change order request for hurricane item repairs to add 27 additional days to the contract for Building 7 at Bayou Blue Elementary School due to delays in fabrication and delivery of bricks by the manufacturer. So move.
Motion by Ms. Du Planis, second by Dr. Gia. Any public comment? Any board discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize. So if I recall correctly, are we opening the school soon? Or how long is it gonna be in business hours?
So, Bayou Blue's open, uh, it's gonna open the first day. That building is not gonna be ready for occupancy until at least October, um, at which time the principal's gonna have the discretion to bring the kids into that building at a time that's proper according to the region. It's probably gonna be a holiday based on the age of the kids, it's pretty disruptive to move them, but she'll have access to the building beginning in October and she can make the call.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure it was gonna be done. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, I am.
I just wanna say that, I wanna thank Bob Menard and also for explaining all of this to us and for the work that they've done. There's no way that we could've handled all of these planes if it couldn't have been what they've helped us to do this and for the explanation that they gave us at each, uh, reading, reading, etc.
And this agenda is a true testament to the fact that our, we are really, a lot of recovery is going on from the, from the hurricane and you have a lot of good things happening. So if no further questions or no further comments, we'll vote.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Ms. Du Planis. I know that was a. Okay, item five, new business. That would be A, it says, to consider approving the 2023-24 pupil progression plan with recommended changes. And so before we accept a motion, we'll go ahead and we'll have a list of the, see, if you want to have a little more chat.
Oh, I don't have anything to share about it. I do have a list of the corrections that, to leave those corrections with page, with page numbers. Not if you've already been briefed on what I would probably say down.
Let's, let's try this. First off, can I get a motion? Okay, motion by Ms. Portita, second by Ms. Sharptier. Any public comments? All right. Board discussion, so before opens board discussion, we were, we have been having this, we were able to preview it, we were able to look at it. So if, if it's okay with everyone, can we just ask Mr. Cook the questions that we may have rather than requiring him to read everything to us? I mean, I think that would be the most logical thing to do. So I'll go ahead and start it up. Does anybody see any board discussion on the pupil progression questions? Looks like you might be off to good times.
Yeah.
It was very well done to me that I attended this summer, it was wonderful. Thank you, um, very well put together. Appreciate you. Okay, with no discussion, we'll go ahead and we'll vote. And that motion passes. Item six, memorial, memorial resolutions. A, Alessio Nicholas, retired teacher. Dr. Gia?
Mr. Alessio Nicholas was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 24th, 1962, as a special education teacher at Raceland High School. He transferred to East Thibodeau Junior High School for the 1967-68 school year, then transferred to West Thibodeau Junior High School for the 1968-1969 school year. He remained there until his retirement on June 26th, 1989. Mr. Nicholas served the LaFouche Parish School District for 27, 26 years.
Question, Ms. Portita?
Um, I mentioned that Alessio was at one time the president of the Retired Teachers Association, so even after his retirement, he stayed very active in the teaching profession for the, um, retired teachers.
Thank you, ma'am. B, Doris Cretini, retired food service technician. Ms. Wells?
Ms. Doris Cretini was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District as a food service technician at LaRose Lower Elementary School on October 1st, 1976. Ms. Cretini retired on May 30th, 2000. Miss Cretini retired on May thirtieth, two thousand and four. Miss Cretini served LaFouche Parish School District for twenty-seven years.
C, Raymond Barrios, retired custodian. Ms. Wells?
Mister Raymond Barrios was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District as a custodian at South LaFouche High School on October thirty-first, nineteen ninety-one. Mister Barrios transferred to LaRose Lower Elementary School on June nineteenth, nineteen ninety-six and remained there until his retirement on December first, two thousand and one. Mister Barrios served the LaFouche Parish School District for ten years.
D, John Verrett, retired teacher. Ms. Portina?
Mister John Verrett was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District as a teacher at Raceland Upper Elementary on January twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty-four. Mister Verrett later transferred to West Thibodeau Junior High where he taught until his retirement on May twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-two. Mister Verrett served the LaFouche Parish School District for twenty-eight and a half years.
So before we continue, I would just like to say that it's very heartbroken to hear of Mister Verrett's passing not long after his wife, Miss Cleo Verrett, who was also a teacher for our district. Um, as a student at West Thibodeau Junior High, they were both like cor- a cornerstone at the school. So I know that they will be witness, we have to definitely keep their family on there.
E, Miss Tammy George, bus driver. Miss Tammy George was hired as a full-time bus operator on November first, twenty thirteen. She served as bus operator until her passing on July fifth, twenty twenty-three. Miss George served in the LaFouche Parish School District for nine and a half years.
I move that these resolutions be adopted by general consent and that a copy of each resolution be recorded on a special page of our minutes book.
With no objections, let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our minutes book. Item seven, tentative dates of future meetings. A, Policy and Academics Committee, Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. B, Business Committee, Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. C, Land and Facilities Management Committee, Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. D, Regular Board Meeting, Wednesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-three. Item eight, Executive Session. To consider entering into executive session to review superintendent's proposed professional growth plan and complete the development of said plans in upcoming school year as per policy C E I evaluation of the superintendent. Motion by Ms. Portina, second by Mr. Pl- Ms. Du Planis. So that is a motion to go into executive session. Um, all of us in favor? We have eight in favor and zero nays. So at this moment, we'll go ahead and we'll, um, close out the boardroom. So.